Okay, so we're ready for roll call. The question tonight is what was your favorite present you got as a kid for Christmas? And I'll start off, say it was my David Crockett coonskin cap that I got amidst of the David Crockett. Mania back in the 50s. Okay, Bruce.
I got it toboggan. We had lots of snow and I had toboggan. Rob?
I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't remember, but I wish I had some of those memories back or time looking at parents. As you get older, you kind of appreciate those things. So no personal items that I can remember.
Rachel?
Uh, my first barbie.
Gerald?
When I was 11 years old, my dad got us each a Daisy BB gun and set up a range in our basement with about a 30 foot area to shoot through. That was, that was fun.
Original Nintendo. Family present.
Gerald?
Uh, we left Janelle.
Oh, wait, well, I wasn't prepared, but it was my savage best doll.
Okay, everyone is here. Are there additions to the agenda?
Uh, no.
Approval of the agenda.
They want you.
Gerald made a motion. Rob seconded. All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comment.
No.
Consent agenda, you know?
Um, I'll let Cheryl start with bills. I was able to go in and peruse the bills and nothing jumped out at me. Everything was business as normal.
Um, personnel are just a couple of minor changes. I mean, we'll see Colin Wolf came back on board as our, um, our head track coach, so we're, we're happy to welcome him back. Um, and then donations, I will just call out for December, we had a $200 cash donation to the nurses office, so. Um, that's the donation acknowledgement, otherwise pretty, um, pretty low key consent agenda today.
Just a question on Colin. Is he coming back as the head coach? We've had co-coach.
Yep, they were, they, he is the sole head coach.
He will be the sole coach, okay.
Yep.
I was curious about that.
Okay.
Their, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Bruce second? Okay. Rachel seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Communication items from the administration?
Um, I have very little. It's only been two weeks since our last meeting. Um, so you'll notice the revenues and expenditures are not updated, but we'll go through those in January, um, just because of the short time period. Um, and then I just really wanted to give you an update on, um, some of the work that I've been tracking with all of our organizations, um, with the legislative platform. I know a couple of meetings ago, we had an opportunity to visit with Representative Demuth and um, I think it's important to continue our work at the legislature and having conversations. So in the future, one of the things that I will be sharing out are, are the various platforms and kind of the common themes. Uh, today I had an opportunity to be part of the, um, MASA legislative committee, um, to start working on kind of what is the right, um, the right ask and the right timing. So we're, we're having conversations around, um, the areas to advocate for. So more information will be coming to you about that, but otherwise I really, there's, it's been a quick two weeks since our last meeting.
I don't have any student reps tonight, so any committee reports, organizational reports?
We did the MRAE A last week, which was primarily made up of, most of the beating was, uh, just getting to know people that are running for electing seats within MRAE A, um, then kind of had some budget updates and then discussed through some of the, um, future plans and asks that, that they're going to look for through legislation, so.
Uh, for the West Central Ed District, uh, setting up a meeting for next year's, whereas that calendar, uh, I have been asked if I would stay on. I have accepted that, but I just want the rest of the board members to know when we go into January and we do start looking at committees, I would appreciate that, uh, if, uh, if I could stay on that.
And that's, that's something that I would support too. I think one of the things when we have new board members learning what the Ed District is, um, it does take a few cycles to know kind of their functioning and how that works, but, um, obviously the board can choose to represent whomever, but, um, I, I, that's a reasonable request in my mind, so.
Your reports. Okay, no old business, let's go to new business. Audit report.
All right, um, so I, we have, um, Ryan Schmidt with, um, Schneider, Wenner.
That was close.
Do you see me sitting here like squinting my eyes trying to read that?
You don't, you don't just know that off the top of your head?
Well, there's a lot of things I remember, but that was, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
So welcome. Uh, thank you for being here to present our, our audit information. I am going to do a little bit of volume control here. Um, all right, let's see if. All right, you want to give me a sound check?
All right, how, how's that?
Okay, I think that works. Uh, let me pull up your, um, so I'm going to pull up the PowerPoint that you sent and share that. Oh, you've got it.
Yeah, I like to share my screen and take control if that's okay.
That is 100% okay. Um, and we do have all the documents linked, so we have that presentation along with the financial statements and the report for the board. So just so that you know, um, that has been shared and presented, uh, to the board and the community.
Perfect. Sounds good. Good deal. All right, well, um, as in the past, I've got a PowerPoint presentation here to run through. Um, it's, I find it's usually a little more palatable, a little more preferable versus, uh, going through the large, you know, 70, 80 page report. Um, so we're just going to hit the high points here, but if anybody has any questions as, as I'm going through, definitely feel free to stop me and, and we can talk about it. So, as in the past, I'm going to start out with a little reminder here and what exactly is the audit process? What is the purpose of an audit? An audit essentially consists of us obtaining your financial records from throughout the past year, and we perform a number of procedures over this information. Um, so these procedures consist of various inquiries about the numbers with, uh, people inside the school, uh, with the management of the school, various analytics where we develop expectations for what your revenues and expenses and year end balances might be based on industry trends or based on uh, prior year's experience with a budget, and then lots of detailed testing and sampling procedures, looking at invoices and bank statements and, uh, you know, reports from the state and from MDE, um, all for the purpose of verifying the individual transactions that are in your accounting system that come together and make up the numbers in the financial statements. So based on the results of these procedures, we're able to then express an opinion on whether or not we feel that your financial statements are accurate, and the opinion that we've given you this year is what's called an unmodified opinion. So that is a clean opinion and that's, that's what you're hoping to receive. So from a high level, that's the overall result of the audit. You did get that clean opinion. Um, we've got a few other things here that we always need to communicate to you if you required communications. Um, this is where we would let you know if there were any problems during the audit as far as, uh, difficulties getting the information we needed, or if we saw anything unusual in terms of accounting transactions or, or policies that we thought were a little strange. As you can see, nothing like that noted here. Everything looked pretty standard, pretty routine from what we could see. As part of the audit, we also look at your internal controls, so your policies and your procedures that you have in place related to the accounting process, and then we have some internal control related, uh, findings that we often need to give. Now, a very common one with many of the districts we work with is a finding for audit adjustments, which is saying that during the audit, if we come across an error or something that needs to be fixed, we post journal entries, we make those corrections, and we help get those financials to the, to the point where we can give that clean opinion. Now, with your district, we actually didn't have any audit adjustments, so that tells me, or that, that should tell you that the numbers that you're seeing on a monthly basis are likely very accurate, um, because we didn't need to make any corrections during the audit process. Now, we do have two internal control related matters here that we do report every year, and these are kind of like the standard two for a district your size. Uh, the first one of these relates to segregation of duties, and this is simply because of the size of your district. There's overlap with certain accounting processes where certain people at the district have pretty much full access to your accounting system, um, and whenever that's the case, then we have to make that note in the financials, make sure you're aware of it, so that you're implementing oversight wherever possible. And then also, we do prepare the financial statements on behalf of the district, um, and whenever anybody outside of the district is preparing those financials and there's not like an internal CPA or somebody performing a review, we have to make a note of that as well. Next page, uh, we also look at your compliance with various Minnesota statutes during the audit. Um, the state actually gives us checklists for each one of these categories to look at how do you go about contracting and bidding, you know, where do you keep your, your cash? What kind of investments or, or deposits do you have? Um, so on and so forth. Um, we did have one finding this year, uh, which relates to the depository insurance that you had at the credit union. Um, so with the credit union, you don't, you don't have FDIC, but you have something that's very similar to FDIC covering your, your cash accounts there, and then they have a supplemental insurance as well uh, for your other balances that are above, uh, the, the threshold for, for the initial insurance, I guess. Anyway, long story short, there was a little bit of a miscommunication and it turns out that not all of the cash balances were fully insured. So if the, if the bank were to go under, if the credit union were to close, then you could have some exposure there, um, which is a violation of Minnesota statutes. Um, it, it wasn't, I don't believe it was a huge amount that was exposed, and I wouldn't consider this to be a, a very significant finding, um, but it's something that should be addressed, uh, just to get in compliance with the statutes and make sure that you're, you're covered going forward. As part of the audit, we also perform what's called a single audit, um, and this relates to the federal funding that you receive. So whenever you expend more than $750,000 of federal dollars during the year, we need to do this extra single audit. And basically, we select a few of those federal programs or at least one of those federal programs, and we look at the terms of that program, what are the compliance requirements? What can you spend that money on? What kind of reporting do you need to do? And then we, uh, basically make sure you complied with all of those provisions. As you can see, we gave you a clean opinion on compliance, uh, and no internal control related matters, uh, that we noted there. And this, this is the, the S or dollars was our focus this year, uh, under the Education Stabilization Fund. All right, with that, we'll move into the numbers a little bit. Um, first, first slide I like to take a look at here is, uh, your enrollment over the past five years. Um, you can see it pretty steady in recent years, just a little bit of a, a decline here from FY22 to FY23, down about 14 students. Uh, ended the year at about 893 students for FY23. Next page, we'll look at the general fund, um, starting out just really big picture. Once again, a five-year trend, uh, 2019 through 2023 with revenues and expenditures, and then your fund balance at the end of each year. Um, so big picture comparison to the budget, revenues did come in over budget by about $203,000. Expenditures were under budget by about $305,000. So on a net basis, you had budgeted for a decrease in your fund balance of around $93,000, but you actually had an increase in your fund balance for the year of, of around $416,000. Now, the next couple pages break those revenues and expenditures down, still, still looking at the general fund, breaking down those same revenues and expenditures into some smaller categories here. Uh, looking at 2022 in the blue, 2023 actual in the red, and then the budget in the green. You can see that the vast majority of your revenues come from state sources. Um, this is driven largely by enrollment. Um, so fluctuations in enrollment can cause a, a decrease here in your funding. There's other factors at play though, too. Um, but you can see overall very close to budget in each category, um, pretty consistent with the prior year as well. Same layout here on the next page for expenditures. Um, biggest areas of expenditures are for regular instruction and, uh, special education, and you can see that that's consistent with the prior year. Overall, not a whole lot of deviation from your budget. Um, tho- those two larger categories were the areas where you had the, the larger, um, you became in under budget, but, um, nothing in particular stood out as far as unexplained budgetary differences. Next page, still looking at the general fund. Uh, this kind of analyzes your fund balance at the end of the year. So this is the fund balance at the end of each individual year, and then breaking that fund balance down into its different classifications. So a portion of your fund balance is restricted for, for specific purposes. A portion is committed, meaning it's been formally set aside or, or assigned for specific items, and then, and then the largest portion is unassigned, meaning you can spend it for day-to-day uh, needs, whatever, whatever that need may be. Um, so biggest changes from last year, unassigned fund balance did increase $185,000, and your restricted balance has also increased about $253,000. Um, a lot of this restriction is for long-term facilities maintenance aid, about $770,000. And then that fund balance in aggregate, uh, looking at the unassigned portion here as a percentage of your annual budget, you do have a policy in place for this ratio to be approximately 12.5% uh, as a minimum is how I interpret that. And you can see that you did have an increase in this ratio this year, up to about 13.6%, so you are in excess of your policy here. Okay, move away from the general fund. We'll take a quick look at each of the other funds the district has. Um, debt service fund, activity here is very typical of what you'd expect. Revenues from state aids and taxes, uh, debt service expenses. Generally, this is how it turns out. You, you either have a slight increase or a slight decrease. Uh, this year was an increase of about $11,000 for the year. Building construction, uh, not much activity here, just spending down some of the remaining dollars in that fund, uh, decrease in this fund balance of about $31,000. Next page just shows the cash in both of those two funds over the past five years, um, kind of reflects what I just talked about on the previous page. Decrease in the building construction, debt service holding pretty steady. Last two remaining funds, we have your food service fund and community service. Uh, food service, the activity here was, was pretty different from FY22 to FY23. Um, FY22, you had pretty significant federal funding still for, for meals. Um, that dropped off in FY23, uh, so those federal revenues dropped almost $500,000, but that was offset by the fact that you were charging for meals again, so that, that added an extra $220,000. Um, but as a result, a little bit more flat on your activity on a net basis this year. Um, so it's a decrease here of about $8100 compared to, from, from the prior year. Community service, activity here, uh, a little bit more revenues and expenses, but on a net basis, pretty comparable to last year as well. Um, increase here of about $117,000 for the year. And you can see the cash trend in both of these funds over the past five years. Community service has been on an upward trend in recent years, and food service, uh, was on an upward trend with that extra federal funding that was coming through. Uh, this year, a little more flat. Okay, so that does it for each one of the individual funds. Uh, just a couple of quick slides here to look at things in aggregate. So this is now wrapping all of your funds together and putting it on the full accrual basis of accounting where, where we include all your non-current items like capital assets and on the next page, long-term liabilities, looking at everything big picture for the whole district. Um, you can see here a slight decrease in assets, uh, both your, your current assets being cash and receivables and more short-term items, um, then also a reduction in your capital assets as well, just with the depreciation of your existing assets. But you also had a corresponding decrease in liabilities. Now, I, I say that if you ignore the green here for a minute, pretend the green isn't there, uh, just looking at your current liabilities and your debt, uh, much less, uh, short-term liabilities as far as amounts due to vendors or contractors at the end of the year, and then also a reduction in your debt as well, just due to the payments that you made during the year. Um, so ignoring that pension liability, um, a, a sizable decrease in your debt here from FY22 to FY23. Now, as a reminder, this net pension liability, the reason I say ignore it is that this is your proportionate share of the statewide pension plan liabilities. So TRA and PERA, they project their future liabilities. They have an actuarial study each year, and, and they have these large liabilities that they calculate, and then they break off a small piece and they allocate it out to each district throughout the state of Minnesota, and they have you put it on your books as a liability. Um, it's not something that you could pay off even if you, you wanted to. You're just going to keep your normal contributions through payroll like always. So you don't have much control over that green bar. And that's why on the next page here, I like to take a look at, uh, your assets versus your liabilities excluding those pension balances, and just see what has happened on a net basis over the past several years. You can see from FY22 to FY23, you did have a bit of a bump on a net basis, looking at your assets versus your liabilities. Last slide, just looking at your debt over the past five years. Um, as you can see, just a bit of a decrease here of the payments that you made this past year. Um, three bonds, bond issuances still outstanding at the end of the year. Any questions?
Hey, one. What's OPEV mean?
OPEB. Okay, that, that would be other post-employment benefits. So each year you have an actuarial study completed uh, that projects your future liabilities for post-employment benefits. So basically, health insurance, uh, for retirees from the district. So it's, it's kind of, it's kind of like the pension thing to a certain extent, except it, it is very specific to your district, um, but it's a, it's a projection of capabilities.
I saw it on the, the statement and it appears to be printed differently than all the rest of the numbers, so it must be a number that wasn't counted, so that makes sense.
Yep.
It's not, it was stated on the statement, but it's not counted.
Yep, yep.
Any questions?
All right. If there aren't any questions, um, I would be looking for a motion to approve the audit report.
Make a motion. Bruce? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Yeah, you too.
All right, let's make sure when he logs off that we don't lose anybody. We're still recording. Sounds good. Okay. All right.
Okay, do we have to go through those financial statements?
Um, we do not. Those are, no.
That's just reports.
Those are the reports that, the, the resources that were listed that were just approved are all of the, the data that was summarized in his presentation.
So we move on to T?
Yep. So, um, one of the things that the board does do at the end of the, the audit is to approve the final 2223 budget, uh, with the fund balance. So this is going to be the document that we've seen over the course of years, but it is reflective of the audit, the finalized audit. So, um, this would be the board approving the 2223 fund balance, um, uh, after the audit.
I make a motion to approve the 2020, 2223, uh, final budget. Second? Um, Gerald second. Any questions? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes? Here, handbook.
All right. Uh, so when we started the school year, I think I, I gave you as a board a heads up that there were a lot of changes that had come through the legislature, and there were also just a number of changes, um, that MSBA, um, when we reviewed their recommended handbook and, and how that kind of feeds into our procedures and processes through the school year, um, that, that we might have a revisit of the handbook, and indeed, that is where we are today. Um, the secondary administration really has, um, had just, um, a number of issues that have, um, arisen in really our middle school population with use of cell phones. So that really prompted, uh, just a, a deep analysis of what's happening around us and what, what is kind of the procedures and practices for other middle school students. But what you're going to see is, um, a recommended change to the handbook, um, that does, um, prohibit the use of cell phones for our middle school students from the time the bell rings to the time the bell rings. Um, and I am going to pull that up so you can see that change identified. Um, extensive conversation has taken place with the staff as well, so that, um, Mr. Orline had an opportunity to hear from them firsthand. Is this problematic? What are the issues and concerns? Um, and, and there is support from the, the staff as well to, um, to make this, uh, recommended change. So what you're going to see is highlighted, and it's a change for grades six through eight, um, that cell phones, cell phones, AirPods, earbuds, and any other non-school issued communication devices will not be allowed from 8:20 to 3:10. Um, so, uh, simply they, they need to, um, they're, that, they need to stay in their lockers. They cannot be on. Um, and really, even during passing time and lunches, you know, one of the things that we found is, um, with the previous, um, the previous procedures, there was the non-instructional, um, but this is a recommendation to, um, eliminate cellphone use throughout the middle school.
Everybody had a chance to read this?
Yeah, I guess the question I have there, you got third offense, so it means the parent can't pick up the phone for a week, is what you're saying?
Uh, no, it means that the student would turn that device into the office for a week. If they come, if it comes to school with them, they have to turn it into the week.
The parent can pick it up.
The parent will pick it up.
But, but the parent doesn't have to wait a week.
No.
No.
Device just be turned into the office every day and picked up at the end of the day.
Correct.
For a week, just to ensure there's no contact with the device.
Correct.
Make the motion to approve their revision of secondary student.
Thomas makes a motion to approve.
Awesome.
Cheryl making second. No questions? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes? Polling place.
All right, so every December, uh, the school districts, especially at a time where you may be considering going out for a, um, uh, a vote that is run outside of your general election, um, school districts need to identify a combined polling place. So what you'll see here is the identification of a combined polling place. Um, our historical combined polling place has been the Painesville Area Center. Um, so, uh, what the board would need to do is to make resolutions setting the, um, the Painesville Area Center as our combined polling places for, um, a specific election that is run by the school district.
I'm making a motion for the this, the resolution?
Yep, looks like it.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote.
Bruce?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Rick?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Passes. On to the first meeting in January.
So we talked a little bit about this at our last board meeting, um, but this is just really formalizing that, um, when our first meeting in January would be held for the organizational structure of the board. Uh, so what we had talked about, um, is holding the meeting on Tuesday, January 9th, with the work session to be held immediately following the organizational meeting. So what this, what this action does is that just formalizes what the board had discussed, um, at our last board meeting.
Is there a motion to approve?
The motion.
Gerald made motion. Rob seconded. All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Policy review, first reading.
Okay, so what you're seeing here is the policy that corresponds with the finding in the audit. Um, so what happened is, um, this, and, and actually I received confirmation that, that this has already been taken, taken care of at Magnify. So we are, we are good to go with the, um, the fact that the board is reading this policy. So the policy committee, um, they reviewed this policy, and really what it does is it, it gives the guidance to, um, our financial entity to protect the the assets that we have to the fullest capacity, which was the citation that we had in the audit. So this makes, brings us up into compliance based on the
So basically, all of our stuff is insured.
Hundred percent. Yep.
And this is just the first reading, so we'll
The first reading, yep.
Prove the next.
And this will sit in the, be available in the district office for twenty days, just like the other ones. So then, because of the time lapse, we will be able to pull everything together. So our policy second read will be this policy in addition to the ones that we reviewed at the end of, sorry, the end of November. Um, oh my goodness.
School perceptions.
I just realized I did not link that in. I've gone back and forth. Hang on, give me one second. I've gone back and forth with the the school perceptions to make sure that our document is a hundred percent up to date. So just give me one second. I'm sorry. There we go. Version five. So two. Five. Your perceptions. I'm sorry, I have this on my, I apologize. All right. So let me share this with the with the group as well. So really, the intent here today is is just to kind of give the board a heads up on the work that has been done to understand and and get a preliminary feeling about how our community feels in regard to the tech levy. So what you're going to see is that there's just a summary of the how that tech levy has been used in the past, so just a reminder of those of those bullet items. And then letting them know why, again, we're asking. Without that funding, we would have, if we were going to maintain the the computers, the technology, infrastructure, the software, those monies have to come from the general fund. So or there have to be, you know, reductions. So it's a reminder that that why we need that funding. There's the how they can take the survey. This is very typical to what our previous surveys have shown and and the format of the previous two that the district has sent. This purely has the board data in addition to myself identified. Why I think it's important for you all to see this and have it, is it just have a visual of what it looks like, is so that if you get questions about it, you're able to kind of respond. Two things with this. Majority of our individuals have done this digitally, but they don't have to. This can be completed and mailed back, and I think that's one of the really key components that's been really important for many of our constituents. So if they do it digitally, they'll either they can either scan the QR code, and there will be a code printed right here that is specific. And there's one for family, and then what happens if there's a couple, for example? One, one individual can use the one code, and then the other individual can contact the district office, and they get a secondary code. So there is no limit to who can complete the survey. Okay? You'll see that our target completion date is by February fifth. So I think why that's going to be beneficial is because when this information is presented back to the board, at that point in time, the board can make a determination if you want to go for a special election in May or in August, based on kind of the information that we have, we'll know how much education needs to take place. So very typically, again, to what we've done in the past, helping to use the survey to communicate informational items, so just reminders about what bonds are, what operating referendum in, or what operating referendum is, and then also the capital project levy, the tech levy. And that's really what we're going and asking for, is that tech levy. Okay? Um, letting them know what it would be used for, here's really where, again, you're going to see the same four items that are identified above, but it adds the addition of the public address, the PA system, that we really have talked about as a priority within our, from a safety perspective and communications perspective across the district. And here's the first, just the simplest question. We went, had a lot of conversation about the language to use, and I think that the recommendation of the survey committee is, or the survey company, is just to keep it as simple as possible, would you support renewing the capital project tech levy at the current rate for each of the next ten years? I think that's a really important piece of information for the community to hear, is that there's not an an ask for additional additional percentage or additional the the rate, the tax rate is not going to change. It would be a pure renewal. Last, one of the previous meetings when we had talked about this, I think Thomas had maybe asked about having to make a statement that it'll increase your taxes. So we don't have to make a statement that says it'll increase the taxes, but you do have to make a statement saying that this will be renewed, any place firing levy. So there will be a statement, it's just, it's just not that one. Okay? It does allow place for comments and suggestions.
So where's that statement going?
It's on the ballot.
On the ballot.
It's not in here.
How come it's not, something like that isn't here?
Because it's
I'll be real clear to everybody. This is people that are not computer literate. They don't know anything about what's going on. It looks like it's a three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand deal. They're going to pick off the numbers as they read it. It's very clear to them that exists today, and it moves on. You can read it in certain parts, but population is all different people. We all get it. We all know what's going on. Is everybody going to get it?
I believe that
Very clear.
Yep, I believe that the language that the survey, the survey developers took, brought to this is clear. We went back and forth to to understand, is it too much? Is it not enough? And so this is the recommendation of the survey company, primarily to address that, Bruce, so that it is, it's clear, it's just a renewal, but it is not going too far and too deep into the weeds.
What I like is it says it bold there twice, renewing this levy would maintain the current tax rate. And then it also says, would you support renewing the capital levy at the current rate for the next ten years? I mean, it's just
Then rule on renew current tax rate, it just kind of
Capital project levy, the project technology levy provides three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand per year. People are going to see three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars, and assume that's what the levy is. They're going to get down to the question till they actually see it. I'm just saying, when people show up to the polls, they're not people who are sitting here. It's everybody in the district. It has to be very clear to them that this exists today.
Yep. And I think, I think that might be something that we learn as a, if the, if if the community doesn't seem to understand that, Bruce, through this survey, then we know what our level of communication needs to be.
It needs to be here, because this is getting to everybody. All these meetings we have, thirty people show up. Twenty people show up. This is getting to everybody. This has to be very clear to people that this is an existing levy, and all we're doing is renewing it.
In that sentence, can we say the current, bolded current capital project levy provides?
So I, what I'm going to do is I'll bring
You're on the face, same same, something that's very clear to everybody. I was, I was, had to, when in last time we had one of these, and and I voted, and I just looked at everybody there. I saw everybody. People that were, I would assume, were probably pretty computer literate, watching, but everybody else is there. They are there based upon whatever we tell them here. Or they have to understand that this is existing.
Or we remove the three-eighty-three per year, because in that, we're just describing what a bond referendum is, what an operating referendum is, and what a capital levy is. And none of the other ones do we say how much we're receiving. This is just a description of what that levy is. So can we just take out, because
I believe they're going to read along and see that number, and their decision is going to be made before they go anywhere else, not understanding totally that it's there today.
So the, and we had a conversation about that, but that dollar amount will be identified on the ballot, as will the tax rate, or the the tax percentage. So so that, that number's going to be there.
No, and I I don't think we hide the number from the public. I'm just seeing, to Bruce's point, is it better placed somewhere else than the first thing that they're reading and shut their brains off before they answer any of the questions, you know? And again, I guess, funding sources, we're describing what funding sources are, but none of the other funding sources tell are describing how much we we received or are receiving for our funding sources. And then that three-to-three better placed somewhere else.
Our auditor was just here. A lot of his stuff was based upon two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. See what I mean? So where is there his? Maybe we show them what the history is. This started here, this was passed here, and what it is, we're just wanting to continue it.
So I'll bring that back, because Bruce, we have that information in there to begin with, that the bond referendum in twenty-nineteen, it was the PAC, the operating referendum in twenty-twenty-two. So we had all that information in there.
We want to stay with this. The information we want in this survey is this one. So if I, I'm just going very back to our auditor, how many charts did we see with a whole bunch of years on it? All over the place, right? I'm not sure the public is not interested in that, too. And how difficult would it be if our issue here is about this levy? This is what it looked like in two thousand, whenever we started, and this is what it's been for that period of time. This is where we are, and that we want to continue it. It becomes very obvious.
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. And I I think what's, what's, the the rate is what's consistent, and it's always been. When you put that, when you put the first, the rate, the tax rate in there, which is, because that's really what is consistently the same, but the revenue that's generated from that tax rate is what's variable, right? That's the three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand. So
That's what people are interested in. Can we put in there? In two thousand fifteen, it was this number? Two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. Then in two thousand sixteen, it was this number. We don't want tax rates and all that in there. What was their exposure in that, and what hit their taxes? I understand that this is going to be fine for
exposure.
A lot of, a lot of the population is not going to be fine for everybody else. I think people are going to misconstrue that like a brand-new levy. What do they think about the school? I mean, people tell me all the time, so when you guys come and ask for more money? That's why I hear all the time, when you come and ask for more money? We're kind of not asking for more money. We're just asking for a continuation of what we had.
Yep.
That is really the biggest issue, and we have to be very clear about it. I don't, I don't see it here.
Yeah, I just, on the other hand, I'll just be the devil's advocate here. If we cloud them with all kinds of numbers for ten years, is that going to just overwhelm them with, what are all these numbers mean?
It would, it would
I don't, I don't know that that's the solution, but I'm just
That'd probably set more people off
Well, yeah.
Than than just this number, but I I I'm not totally disagreeing with you, Bruce. I'm not saying this is bad either, but if we're going to use the number, then maybe we need to put the current capital project levy, or we need to, you know, find a better place for it, so that it it stains it in there. And the more we can turn around and say, what we're currently doing is this, and we want to maintain this, the more that, that's a driven home, I think, feels better to really to that point. Tell a little story as far as what was last year, because otherwise, the way it is now, it's like, you know, I don't want to hide numbers from anybody, but that number just pops out, and then people are going to assume that, well, they want another three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand a year.
Well, but that is what we get every year. But that's, that's what our, that's what our, what our
But to maybe explain, not a ten-year chart, but just to explain what we got last year, maybe to, just to tell a little story behind it, how we arrived at it.
Okay, so the the risk we re, we, the risks we run in going into the weeds of putting the percentage and how that changes with your tax value, the amount of money that the district receives, because that's really the story. Because the story is, we have asked for a percentage of the taxable market value. Okay? So when, when you look at the truth in taxation, when he talked about the additional, and I'll just kind of go back, I'm going to just pull it, because he called it specifically out as one of the variables and one of the changes, because it is it's fifty-one-thousand-two-forty-three. Now, if property values go down, we will get less than three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars. We would lose, we would not, we might go backwards by twenty-thousand dollars if property value increase this year. But so do you see how weedy that is to get into in a survey?
And maybe it's just a starting point, too. I guess I, I kind of agree with Bruce in the fact that and I want this to go through, but, you know, we got to start somewheres, but I'm just, I'm just worried from, I'm talking from the rural community. You know, the valuations have gone up, and I know that's for a different date for us to talk about that, but I guess that's what I'm lured of, but I guess we got to start somewhere.
How many sample people has it gone to? I got a, I got a group that I run across, and whenever there's something going on, they're over to hassle me. And it's, let's just call it a coffee group. I'm curious what they think.
I don't know if that's a practice we want to get into.
They're going to go right to three-eighty-three.
I don't know that we want to get back into a practice of having our community vet out our survey.
You have to, what we are after here is to know what the community thinks with a full understanding of what happens.
Right.
And what triggers me is when we're going to try and explain it to them in groups of ten and twenty, and a whole bunch of meetings, sometimes three, sometimes thirty. You're not there. This is going to every, so it's in the public, it has to be.
That's also why we're hiring this professional group who does this across the state and understands that sentiment in communities across the state. I don't think we're different than who comes over.
And I can give them that feedback. I can, I hear what you're saying, and I can give them the feedback of, okay, so how else can we communicate the the history? I think I when, when you are asked, Bruce, when are you coming back for more money? I think the answer is now, because we told you we needed to. Like, that, this has been a story that's been told many times over, and I, I and people don't remember.
It's all kind of partials. We we've told everybody that's coming and everything. People just need an explanation. We talk about transparency. Okay, let's be transparent about what this really is. It's an existing levy, and all you're going to do is is renew it to have it continue.
And again, it's bottom of the page, it says it twice, in big bold letters with a question. I, I don't, I don't see where that's not being transparent, but saying we're going to renew this for the same tax rate, and we're going to, and now the question is, would you support us redoing it for the same rate? That's the question. So
So is the, is the, is the trigger, the the dollar amount in there? Because that's factual.
Yep.
It's also transparent, because it's factual.
The capital project levy provides three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars per year for purchasing, installing, supporting technology, devices, systems, training, personnel. This is a levy that will expire next year. The only thing that's picking it up is the last three words.
So again
That is an existing levy.
Can you put current in there ahead of the three-eighty-three? This levy currently
I just, that we are the same as everybody else, I don't believe that's true. We have seen schools pass levies that I'm not sure we could have passed here. What we have done is we've tried to be totally transparent. I'm not sure we could have passed here. What we have done is we've tried to be totally transparent, and you got one shot to get to every single person that could show up at a voting pool. Maybe they take advantage of it, they don't. But if we have stuff that we're gonna try and cover, we're gonna get enough stuff to cover anyway. But to try and get them basic message that this is an existing levy across, I, I get a little careful.
So then why do we hire this professional group to come in and do this for us, you know?
Well, nobody hires anybody just to do their thing. You have to put some personal touch in it. I mean-
We're gonna find our own focus group to direct this.
Send it back to them to find out what they say. Um, they can't be doing them all the same, same for everybody. Um, most of these, we, I have, most of these I have seen way more than just once before we're gonna decide to send it.
So Bruce, how would you feel about the word currently? Yes. This levy currently provides, does that make it more clear?
I think it does.
Yes.
And then that-
I don't think, I don't think we're looking at just the simple stuff that we, seeing what's going on is passing over. We gotta get it to people of what exactly is going on.
I like that word, just to modify it a little bit. I mean, that's, you gotta put a little lipstick and rouge on it, I'm sorry to say, but it's.
Okay.
And, and let's not kid ourselves, after this survey, we as a group, we've got our work cut out for ourselves because, yeah, I think, I feel it's kind of our responsibility to answer any questions or, or, uh, regardless, get the right, regardless of how they're making it back. We still have a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah.
I, I kind of feel with Bruce that that is, it's going to hit with sticker shock, the three hundred and, I mean, when, if you've got an annual budget for your family of seventy thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, that sounds like an awful lot of money. I mean, I'm used to dealing with it here because we deal with big bucks. But if I was a first-time homeowner with three kids and just looked at that number, it's whoa, it blew the top off my head. But at the same time, when we think about three hundred and eighty-three dollars for all of our students, all of our classrooms, all, we spread it out. It's not a lot of money.
This is the, kind of the quandary with doing a survey around a tax-rated item that is not a per pupil funding. That was, that's the quandary about this type of a survey, cause you're, you're essentially asking to understand what is our level of support to renew where we are. That's really what we're trying to understand. And if there's not the level of support, then what we need to find out is why. And how do we communicate that? And is there a different set of priorities?
I, I think if we're really clear about this isn't going to, this, we're not asking for more. We're just asking for what we've got. If we're really clear about that, I really think this will pass, but we have to make it clear.
Let's go through the rest of the survey. If currently is the only thing we're missing, then I think we keep moving forward.
Cause I think if we just need to make it look like it's not zero to three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Yes, what is it now? What is it now?
So-
Is it three forty-three or three forty-eight-three?
That's what it is. It's right now. That is what it is.
But it's not three eighty-three, from zero to three eighty-three. It's appearances that it's zero to three eighty-three.
So let me, let me bring back this question. Does it seem better to ask for a three-point, put in the percentage? A consistent three point seven four five, whatever it is, um, percent of the taxable market value? Now, now that, that in my mind muddies, it becomes more confusing.
I think you're right with the number. I just don't know. I mean, I'm looking at this for five minutes, like everybody else was. I've seen these before, where I had a chance to look at it and think about it a little bit. So I don't have it right off, but somehow to tell people, this isn't zero to three eighty-three, a whole bunch of this has been there for ten years, all we're wanting to do is continue it.
Right. Okay.
And it appears to me, like, just listening to you talk, Cheryl, if people look at that and say, three eighty-three, man, I got a young family. It's not three eighty-three, it's whatever that difference is from the previous year, and it's been there for ten years, or I, I'm not sure how to do it. And I'm not sure it's reasonable for me to have to do it in five minutes either.
Well, and we can, I can, I, so the, the, this is why we've hired the company, Bruce. I don't, this, I have asked them, here's what we're trying to communicate. We need to understand, will they support our existing, our existing levy? That's really the bottom line. So the questions become, well, what is the current data? It's three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. It's your three-point whatever tax, percent tax. What is the current data? And what, that's, that's what you have to per, put out for the community. As we look at like the bond and the operating referendum, we can tell the story about in twenty nineteen, the community supported this. In twenty twenty-two, the community supported this. Now, my wondering is that, are they gonna say, I'm done saying yes. We've said yes, and yes, you don't need anymore. Right? That's a worry I have. And that's already, I think, a sentiment that I think people are worried about currently. So do we put that information in there? I don't know. That was a question.
I'm actually not gonna add anymore, cause I can't think fast enough to figure this out in five minutes.
Okay.
I'm just telling you, it doesn't read right to me.
I, I like the word current, the current. Are you doing existing or currently or something in there? But currently is, I think I counted it three times on that one page.
Thank you.
It's already, but we added it more time?
Yeah, but I think just before that, just before that dollar value that we're saying, if we have current or currently, that, yeah.
Yeah. And I can, I can put it out. I, and I will send it, I'll send this back to the board after I get another. Um, the, I will ask you to, to look, check your email, please, because they will ask for this to go back so that they can get it to their printers, so we can get it out after the viewers to be here. Is that fair? Okay?
I think what we've decided right here is, we couldn't have so much more and make it so much worse. Cause I'm getting Mark confused. And it was simple to start with, but it's getting more confusing to me, but.
Okay.
I mean, we're, I don't wanna confuse people any more than we have.
Let's come back into the other areas of the survey, okay? Because one of the other things, pieces of feedback that I know I heard is that the only time you ask us what, how we're, how the district is doing, is when you need money. So I think it's really important to find out other portions of feedback. So this is where the other areas are. Um, some general, like, how is the district doing in relation to communications? Okay, so these are some, this, this is language that's been used with many other school districts, so it's kind of vetted as, these are topics that, um, the communities will, would like to provide feedback on. So communications, um, and again, they would answer with strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, or not sure or no opinion, okay? And in all of these areas. Um, and it's, every statement is the district provides me with the opportunity to offer feedback, or the district communicates with me effectively. Okay, so you're gonna see communications questions about our culture, maintains a safe and secure campus as the support of the community. Again, this is just of, of the entire community's perspective, okay? Um, leadership, academics and development, support for learning. This gives us an opportunity to hear where are the areas that our community feels like we're doing well, and where are the areas that our community feels like we should focus on a little bit more. Okay, so this is a, a opportunity to give, get feedback from our community members. Okay? From there, we think about the future ready planning. So when we've talked about strategic planning and knowing what are the areas that we should be focusing on, this is a, a place that we can start gathering what are some of the other areas that our community might feel like we need to focus on, okay? And these are, again, a, a pretty traditional, um, list of items that schools are often, often focusing on. Um, and it'll give us an opportunity to hear where our community, maybe we get six themes from this, or seven themes from this. And then the board has an opportunity, when you wanna look at strategic planning in the future, maybe you dig into those items. Okay? And then it opens it up in both, it opens it up to say, are there things that we haven't identified? So it gives a free range opportunity for, um, just a response as well. And then what do we want our graduates to know? So we've got everything from leadership, conflict resolution. This really aligns pretty nicely to the culture and climate work that have been done um, to understand, you know, do we, do our kids, um, I, I look up and I see, uh, managing stress and strong mental health, leadership abilities, non-academic skills, resilience, grit, courage, empathy. Some of those also align with our current, um, PBIS initiatives. So it'll be interesting to see how does that align with what our community is seeing. Okay? Again, opens up at the tail end for place to add additional information. Okay? And then this is the same that we've had in every other survey, just the general pulse of the district. How is the district doing delivering high-quality education? These are the same four questions that have been on every other survey that have gone forward. Okay? Um, and then it's the demographics, so we can find out who completes our survey. So, um, part of the reason I did not put this into the board agenda ahead of time is because I don't know that it's appropriate to send it out into our community before the survey is, is finalized and vetted um, with the board, so I can certainly send this to you to review, um, via an email, and you can give your feedback. Um, I do have a call scheduled with, um, with Kim later this week, so, um, I can, and I'll bring this feedback forward as well.
Nothing in there that's secret by any means. We don't, we just wanna ask the public what's wrong, and we're trying to be transparent. I don't get the security of a survey.
Well, let's get it in the final form before we get it out there. If we're gonna add a word to it, one word may, may make a difference.
Normally, if you have something that's going to the public, you take samples, just see what people think. Do they understand all of that kind of stuff? Um, it's not like-
I think that's-
I'm an expert or anybody's a specific expert, and our communities are different. Um, I just, all we're talking about is transparency here.
But it's amazing, you can look at a statement, like, I've read it a dozen times, and now I'm thinking the other way, it's probably good. So, yeah, it can make, it's a matter of how you wanna read into it.
So again, I think this is, this is part of what the board hired School Perceptions to do, was to pull together the information. Um, I will give them this feedback, and I'll let them know what the wonderings are. Is this as clear as can be that this is existing and this is our current? Can we add to that and make it more clear?
They may already have a solution.
Sure.
If they're, but we think they are.
Yep.
That's what's happened before.
Okay. So, um, this, that was just informational, so there is not anything, there doesn't, there's any action on that.
Okay.
No, we would like Ron to stand.
Um, so every year, we, uh, we do get notification from the School Board Association when our, our board members um, have completed, uh, various levels of training, so.
I see if anybody else did.
Well, you're just a little bit further ahead, and that's okay. So we got, you got done all four. Very good. Congratulations, Juan. Thank you.
Um, and then both, well, can I, shall I keep going? Sorry, okay. Um, real quick reviewing, um, upcoming meetings, we have December nineteenth, teacher negotiations. Um, and then, um, actually, I'm also going to add on there, January or, please, January eighth, we have a, Miranda, can you add January eighth food service? Um, and then, um, cause that one is actually before our, um, January board meeting. Okay?
So four P M. in here, your, your time.
Okay, includes, uh, our regular business, we're gonna go into closed meeting at this time, so we will need a motion to close the meeting for the purpose of conducting the superintendent evaluation.
Let me get a motion.
At-
Seven thirty-two.
Seven thirty-two. There's a motion, Cheryl?
Second.
Second for Bruce.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the meeting will now move into closed.
Okay. All right, you're live.
So we need a motion to open-